Check one, two.
Welcome to this meeting for Monday, May 20th. And let's go toward this meeting. Is anyone ready to review and move the agenda for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Carter and a second by Mr. Polis. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye and our agenda is approved. And the first item here is informations and proposals, non-action items from Superintendent Yunowski. We have public comment. And we had three people signed up, one student who's not in the room at the moment. I would welcome, I think we all welcome any statements from our students. And so I'm going to go with the next person on the list, Nicole Emerson. Please join us and welcome. Thank you for being here. Board Secretary, I didn't do introductions today. I'm like in a hurry. I'm so sorry. Board Secretary, Cassandra Quam is going to be showing you, giving you some warnings for time. And I will, if you allow me 30 seconds just for the record, to chair who's in the room today. We are joined by Director Spencer, Director Carter, Director Polis, Director Lee, also Student Representative Shimdalu Tiwa, and we also have Mr. Jorge.
Herrado.
Herrado. Castañeda Lopez. I was gonna say Mr. Castañeda Lopez. Okay, welcome. And we're also here with Paola Hernandez Duñiga. Paula Cole, and with that, welcome to our meeting.
Yeah, it'll turn green.
Ah, okay. Hello, School Board, Chair Cole. My name is Nicole Emerson. I am a parent of a seventh grader at Richfield Middle School. I also hold a bachelor's degree in management and a master's degree in community and applied social psychology. And you're probably wondering why I'm telling you this. I know data very well. I work with data analysts all the time. So I just wanted to make that clear, that my understanding of data is in an educational background, not here as a disgruntled parent per se, if that makes sense. I am also a union leader. The Minnesota Association of Professional Employees is my union. I work for Minnesota State Colleges and Universities as the Assistant Director of Student Life. I also lead 2,100 MAPE members across the state at all of our colleges and universities. That's 33 institutions in Minnesota, 54 campuses. I regularly speak at the Board of Trustees meetings that oversee and run the Minnesota State Colleges and Universities. It is important to me to lay this foundation in this conversation because what I've had shared with me is troubling and elementary, especially when it determines someone's job, a human being. Okay? So not only that, I brought a printout of an email sent to all parents by Steve Yunowski. There's a number of things I do want to address in regards to the cutting of teachers, especially theater, of a person who's very devoted and a mentor to all of his students. I will say that we have student participation numbers of this program over the last two years, and over 200 students participated in this program. So when I see a line from an email saying, unfortunately, over the past two years, we simply were not able to engage as many students as we would like, that's a problem to me. Okay? Our district prides itself on listening to students. We had over 20 students here at the last meeting. In addition to that, we had over 500 people sign a petition that we did share via email with all of you. What is also troubling is the fact that you saw those students here at the last meeting, you still followed through on voting for what you knew they were here standing up against. I am speaking to integrity, so I'm gonna read the definition. Integrity is the quality of being honest and showing a consistent and uncompromising adherence to strong moral and ethical principles and values. In ethics, integrity is regarded as the honesty and truthfulness or earnestness of one's actions. I have seen a lack of that over the course of the last month in regards to this decision. I've seen a lot of defensiveness, digging heels in and not listening, even though the email says you're listening. I, as a professional, as an educated professional, as a leader in my union, in the largest unaffiliated union in the United States, this would not fly where I come from and at those venues. I also am going to say, based off this email, it says, the results of the student survey says 570 completed the surveys. I know for a fact that our students in theater took this survey more than once. So I would push back on that number, number one. Number two, first choice, if you count up that first column, only 462 responded, not 570. Again, doesn't look good. We want to provide as many options as we can for our students. Then if this wasn't a financial decision, which we were, we were told up and down it was a cost-neutral decision, why aren't we adding, not taking away? Okay? Fifth graders were also not surveyed. They're gonna make up one-third of the school next year. That's a problem. And sixth and seventh graders that were surveyed already took this class. Why would they answer on a questionnaire that they want to take it again? It doesn't make any sense. Finally, I will end my remarks in the, although sometimes student schedules, quoting the, how are students placed in elective classes at the middle school? It says, a survey was administered to sixth and seventh grade students, asking them to rank their electives preferences for the following school year. RMS staff work hard to provide students with their top choices as much as possible, although sometimes student schedules make it difficult. Incoming sixth graders, sixth grade students are assigned to electives their first year. So this is a choice for two grades, but we're assigning fifth graders. And again, going back to, why are we cutting theater? This class makes it equitable for students to access this during the day. This is very important, and I'm not gonna repeat the statistics or the reports I shared with all of you over email, because I'm hoping you read it. At the last meeting, you were addressing us, but we couldn't respond back. Right? You were try, you, all I'm saying is that if you noticed, and the statement at the last board meeting was, there were some mistakes made, we'll do better next time. No. Integrity says, we know mistakes were made, we're gonna do it over, we're gonna do it right. So our students, the 200 students that look to a specific teacher as a mentor, don't have to cry to all their parents having to be forced to say goodbye. That's ridiculous. I know for a fact there are many people at RMS that treat students not so well. And they're still there. It's frustrating as a parent. It is very frustrating, but it's also frustrating as a professional, because if I were the union member at this particular issue at a different venue with the state colleges and universities, I would jump in and I would do what's right. And I'm hoping that all of you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your statements. We now welcome Ann O'Neil. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I'm also here today to ask that the board reconsider employing Eddie Paul and keeping his theater class. I'm also asking both, as a parent of a middle schooler who has benefited tremendously from this program, but I'm also asking as someone who hired and led teams for 25 years, theater classes teach students how to collaborate, how to work as a team, how to communicate effectively, and they really help students gain the emotional intelligence that we need in today's workforce. That's huge. I can tell you, anyone I've ever had to let go, it was an emotional intelligence, communication, it was a people skill issue. This is a huge skill that we can give these kids, and I'd love to see it continue. So, and to replace a theater class with a photography class, when our photography is automated nowadays in our smartphones, and, you know, just, it seems a little short-sighted, and I think it's gonna short-change our kids in doing that. The formerly anemic Richfield Middle School Theater Program has come to life under Eddie Paul. Absolutely come to life. He made the theater program, I'm sorry, I'm not good at public speaking, I didn't have a theater class when I was in school.
You're doing great.
Thank you. So, I mean, he made the program a community event by putting on fundraisers, family set building day, he brought everyone in, organizing volunteers for costumes, makeup, concessions.
we are taking notes. And I know I will be reaching out to you and to continue further the, the conversation. This is not a thing about decisions to be made, but I do want to acknowledge what you're saying, and I want to learn more about your, your stories. I will pass the mic now to Superintendent Janowski.
All right, so we have two reports this evening. Summer School Preview. Jonathan Hayer, who is our Director of Extended Learning, will be talking about all the programs we are offering during summer. And then, as requested by the board, there will be an annual survey follow-up report. And so we'll be having a conversation about some of the things that have been actions taken since our survey back a few months ago. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan Hayer.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. Really excited to be here to share with you a preview of our summer programs tonight. And we'll be beginning with a mission statement and our vision. Then it will include information about our summer programs and the impact progress that they, and progress that we've made towards them. Also, some information about the district's summer learning network. And then we'll finish off with some of our curriculum and partnership updates. And so, as you've already read the Richfield mission statement, I also want to read our Richfield Summer Programs Statement. Our Richfield Summer Programs create opportunities for students to make deep connections with peers and caring adults while meeting students' academic, social, emotional needs in a fun, safe, and responsive environment. We also have our Richfield Public School pillars that guide our work. Community, Equity, and Excellence. And then I'll also mention, especially for our new board members, the district's summer learning network and their pillars are equity, whole child development, partnerships, and academic quality. Our robust offerings are led by amazing and dedicated educators. And I'd like to take this opportunity to just honor their work. They're working in other capacities throughout the school year, and they have stepped up to create these programs that make a real difference for our Richfield students and their families. Their teams really do make the dream work. We have six main programs. We have our elementary grade program at the STEM school for rising first through fifth graders. At the middle school, we have our, our rising sixth through eighth graders. We have an extended school year program, which is our special education program that services students pre-K through 12 plus. And those programs happen at multiple buildings throughout the district. We have our Spartan Summer Camp for incoming ninth graders that's held here at the, at the high school. Along with that program at the high school, we have credit recovery for our rising 10th through 12th graders. And then, new from last year, our Language Enrichment Academies, which also happen at multiple buildings throughout the district in the summer. Together, those leaders and more than 100 caring adults will serve more than 900 students across the district this summer. So their impact is proof that Rich, in Richfield, learning never stops. And that's one of our taglines for our summer programs. Again, I mentioned I wanted to talk a little bit about our district's summer learning network and their partnership. So FHI 360, in partnership with the Wallace Foundation, they launched their district's summer learning network after the COVID pandemic. And it's to help districts across the country to maximize the potential for summer learning and to promote student well-being. And so we've partnered with them over the last two years. Some of the supports that they provide for us are individualized coaching from experienced consultants. We also get professional development and workshops for our summer teams. And they also give us evidence-based tools and resources that we can use as we implement and plan for our summer programs. DSLN has also brought us the summer programs roadmap idea. And we use that roadmap to have multiple planning cycles. We plan and reflect and look at the approaches that we've had in the summer before to make the next summer even better. It allows us to learn and grow over time and to engage a lot of different stakeholders throughout the process. We make sure that we're thinking about problems that we can solve and ways to make our summer programs even better. And then we're continuing a lot, continuously aligning with district existing and emerging priorities. And again, in this way, in Richfield, learning never stops for our students, for our staff, and for our leaders. At the end of last summer, I shared with you some of the reflections and some of the future planning that we have for this summer. So these are some of the things we learned last year. We had learned that our middle school goals for a new curriculum and higher attendance were met. We also learned that we wanted to continue embedding enrichment opportunities, and that went really well with our partners last year. And we continue to do that in the upcoming summers. We, we found out that our Spartan Camp attendance and programming needed some refinement. And so we've been working on that throughout the school year as well. And then we continue to know that and value the student support teams that we've been able to add since our, of the COVID pandemic. Thinking about future planning, we shared with you last summer that we wanted to continue to work with the district's summer learning network as they help in consulting about our summer programs. And then we wanted to align with our new district's systems for assessment, our FastBridge system. And then again, that focus on that Spartan Camp enrollment and curriculum. And then continue to build on the success and refine the summer program systems that we've started to create. So thinking about those things, here's some of, some of the progress that we've made over the school year as we get ready for summer of '24. So we've increased access to our language enrichment academies. We've gone up from 75 student openings to 90 students that we can service in our language academy, especially for our new coming students. We've expanded choices and capacity for Spartan Camp. So instead of 60 students, we have spots for 80 or 85 students. Some of the expanded offerings include art, culinary arts, and bike safety, riding and repair elective classes during Spartan Camp. We streamlined an internal application process for our staff, which takes away barriers for our PS teachers so that they can more easily let us know that they want to work with us in the summer because we know that our Richfield teachers are the best ones for our summers and, for our students in the summer as well. We've created leadership development opportunities for our summer leaders. So in partnership with DSLN, we created a three-session leadership development course to prepare our summer leaders for their work. And then we continue to collaborate with our Beacons and Dolores Works Partners to create enrichment programming for our students. And then again, refining all of our systems, from recommendations and registrations to transportation and communication. So that's been some of our work throughout, or from last summer throughout the school year and getting ready for 2024. Wanted to share with you some of the curriculum that we use at our programs. For the elementary program, it's largely unchanged. We're going to continue to double down on training so that our teachers know how to use the manipulators and games that can really enrich the student experience and make it different from what they do during the school year, but yet be able to focus on the academics as well as enriching and fun opportunities for them at the elementary level. At the middle school level, it's our second year of the ELA and math units that were written by our Richfield staff prior to last summer. And they, we continue to use those, refine those so that they can continue to bring clarity and continuity to our middle school program. And then, as I mentioned before, we're including new offerings at the Spartan Camp curriculum level, including that art, culinary arts, and cycling offerings there. I wanted to mention again the importance of our student supports during the summer. We know that student supports are vital during the school year to make school work for our students. And so we've incorporated that into our summer programs as well. School social workers at the different sites, student engagement specialists being there as well. Building substitutes so that students know when a teacher is gone, they're going to have somebody that they know is going to be in their classroom. And then continuing to work with our literacy and math interventionists at the elementary level so that some students can get even more help during that summertime as, as they continue to grow. Partnerships are another huge part of our summer programming. We continue to collaborate, like I mentioned before, with Dolores Works and the Beacons Network to offer enrichment opportunities. You can see all the opportunities up there for our Richfield students. Dolores Works helped offer classes, including coding, pickleball, art classes. And then the Beacons Network also runs an after-school program at our elementary site for between 100 and 150 students from, for three hours after we're done with the day. They're there for another three hours during our, our four-week summer session. And then in addition to that, they offer a three-week summer camp for K-8 students to help round out the summer for our Richfield families. And we continue to work to ensure the sustainability of these amazing partnerships and opportunities for our students as we plan for not only this summer, but summers in the future. And so with that, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to give you a little preview about the summer programs here at Richfield Public Schools. And I'd love to answer any questions you might have about the programs tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, comments?
If, if I could ask, the, the elementary summer school program mentions the, the continued use of last year's materials. While we are piloting something that will ideally be approved by the state for, under the new, under the, the new reading curriculum, and we, we think it fulfills that, but I, I just don't know why we would anchor in the soon-to-be sunsetted and somewhat discredited version for another summer when, when we consider the students who are part of our summer school curriculum perhaps need more intervention and probably need it in the curriculum that we are aspiring to have sooner rather than later. So it, it feels like a missed opportunity to use the one that we, we are wheeling to the dumpster as soon as we can. I don't know why we would continue to use it for a program that's not yet launched. And it's not necessarily directed at you, that's more for the superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges we have is half of our teachers chose to go with Benchmark. Half have not been trained in that. And so we're in kind of this awkward position from a summer school perspective. And so we need to use database supports and interventions. It should not rely solely on the Conkyns curriculum. And so I, I would agree, we're going to need to figure out, or summer school has to make sure that it is bolstering the curriculum well beyond what it offers. Unfortunately, we don't have, we have a set of folk who have not yet been trained in implementing a different curriculum. I don't anticipate this next year at this time.
No, I, I understand that. I guess, yeah, so, okay. So some of the boils down to the staff we have willing to do it are not the ones who previously been trained, and we don't have the time to train them in the interim.
On a curriculum and teach them how to roll out a curriculum that we may or may not use. Had we had, had MDE basically moved our curriculum forward, we would have gone full bore into our new curriculum. We were hoping it's Benchmark, but they're not looking to approve until the end of summer, which kind of puts us in an awkward spot.
Well, thank you.
So thanks for the presentation. I'm, I'm curious about, for, for the kids that are really attending summer school to make up for lost ground. Are you using like FastBridge, or how are you, how are you measuring advancement through the summer?
Yeah, absolutely. So over the last few years, we've noticed that we, we needed something consistent that aligns with the district assessment system. And so FastBridge has come in this year. We will be using FastBridge as our initial, or the spring scores for FastBridge is our initial scores for summer students coming in. And then we'll be, we have another window where we can do some testing at the end of summer to see that growth. And then the, the plan is to also measure how students are doing compared to the students who didn't come in to summer in the, in the fall. So how did students who didn't come compare to students who did?
Yeah, I'd love to see that data when I get there. Thank you.
I've got one super important question. I saw that the, the elementary looked like classes included pickleball. Can the adults sign up? Where's the law?
Hey, any, any of you are welcome to come to summer programs at any time. At the STEM school, pickleball will be happening. We'd love to have you join us. Absolutely.
We could get Mr. Carter a community ed brochure.
Yeah, right. If Jennifer's listening, because I didn't read that either.
Please come. Open invitation to all.
Thank you for the presentation. There was one thing that I saw about substitute building, like building relationships with substitutes. How are you going to incorporate that with the summer programs?
Definitely. So we posted for a position or two at the elementary site and the middle school site so that that person will already be there. They'll receive all the training, they'll be there for all the staff development pieces. And then we have other places where they can also help. We know that there are some planned absences, and then there'll be some absences that aren't planned. And so we just really want that continuity of staff so that we're not scrambling at the last minute and so that students get somebody who already knows the system in their classroom.
And are those substitutes going to be just for the summer? Are they going to be for the spring?
So we're hiring just for the summer, but I know our schools also have premier reserve subs that they have during the school year. Thank you for the question.
I'm going to follow up on that.
Yes.
Have you approached the subs that are already working for the district to see if they want to work in the summer?
Absolutely.
I know a few that might, and their premier subs are ready.
Yes, yes. Yeah, absolutely. A lot of the premier subs have worked with us in, in summers past, and we have already hired some of them for the summer as well. Some of them have teaching licenses that can also be in our classroom positions, and some of them don't, and they work in a, in a different capacity.
Are you going to be using RSEP for some of this credit recovery, or do they shut down?
Yeah, so RSEP is a little bit different program. They have their own summer program for two weeks after our school year is done, where their students really get that one-on-one attention from their RSEP teachers. And so if there is a student who, after that, doesn't meet credit and would like to join the credit recovery at the high school, they can do that as well.
You just push them over to the credit recovery side.
Yeah, if it's a good fit, yeah. For them and for, for them. It's all about them.
Anybody else?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, we are also going to talk about our annual survey and follow-up. And so, just as a reminder, our annual survey is a group of two surveys that we reported back. It is to parent and guardians, and then it's also sent to staff members. And we use it to measure progress towards strategic plan goals. It actually supports our evaluative process. And it also helps us figure out areas to improve. And we presented that on April 1st. And then the conversation that the board had was really about, what are we going to do with that information and how do we report it back? And so as part of the process, after the board sees the materials and it's presented publicly, then things go to our administrators for further conversation. And so just to illustrate what the next steps of each of those components and give a few examples. Each building and department leader shared survey results with their staff at a staff meeting or through other staff communication. And so they did follow up to their constituents. RMS is actually doing this on June 7th as part of a full staff meeting as part of their closing meeting to talk about things. And so they will bring that to closure at that time. They've also communicated survey results to parents through a newsletter or Parent Square message to report back some of the steps that they are taking and also some of the things that they heard. And then our teaching, learning, and special programs team shared their results with each of the instructional leadership teams, which is our staff members who are leading in each of the buildings. And will also share further at June Prep Fest, which is a full leadership team group gathering that occurs the week when school's out. Some examples of some of the specifics that are not necessarily included in there. HR and finance. So part of their goals and part of their evaluation is really around working to improve consistency and accuracy of their response to staff inquiries. And so they have a ticket system similar to what has occurred with technology. And so they are using that data to monitor their goals, their growth, and their improvement. We did hear about tech hardware and data tool concerns. We did hear about tech hardware and data tool concerns. We do have a new Director of Technology, Justin Steele, starting July 1. Those are two areas that will be in his initial goals for improvement as he joins our district, making sure that those become effective and become more effective. We did hear commentary about keeping high-performing and diverse educators in the district. And so it's important to also review the data. This past year, 43% of our new hires were BIPOC staff members. That's actually 15% higher than the overall percentage of all of our staff. So we continue to grow in our diversity. It's also important to note that only 57 staff members have voluntarily left the district this year, which is significantly less than 2021, 21, and 22, and then also similar to last year. And then we also continue to have systemic supports for those who are new to RPS, including our Equity Professional Development, mentorship, and coaching, both from us as a district, but then teacher leaders in the building, and also teacher leaders from our union. And then, as we've talked about at the board level, we've been asked to have the Competitive Activities Advisory continue to examine activity fees, their importance in funding. And so we continue to examine changes to activity fees in the future, and that'll be one of the steady work components of Director Peterson, along with Principal Collins. Next steps that we then also take, so we have final evaluations of each of the administrators and each of the management team members. And so those results are going to be incorporated into their final goals, and those meetings are happening at the end of May and beginning of June. As you also know, my survey results end up part of my evaluation that we'll do with this board. And every single administrator has an evaluation taking into account survey data and specific goals for improvement based on that data. So as we look, similar to what you all see with me, each administrator sets specific goals based on their feedback and tries to take steps forward to improve targeted areas in those goals. Survey results also are going to be discussed with new incoming administrators. So for example, at RDLS, we have a new principal, Matt Arnold, joining us. And so he'll see the feedback of the team there and use that as a good way to launch some of his targeted focus of how he's going to launch as a principal. And then we'll continue to use those in August as similar to what we'll do with me at the board in the fall. Each of our administrators and all of our program and building managers have evaluation and performance-based goals set similarly to what we do here at the board, all of them incorporating survey data. And so with that, I will stop and see if there are board questions.
Questions for Superintendent Janowski? Don't see any. Thank you for sharing, and we look forward to seeing it all roll out.
Sounds good. All right, so we are on commendations. And so this is the time of year as we have staff recognition, and we also are coming to a close of our school year. We frequently get a number of commendations. And so they're in here in full, but I'm going to do some quick summaries. RPS would like to commend Kathy Gordon, pre-K teacher at STEM. We had a parent reach out about a pre-K student at STEM, about how their son has thrived during his first school experience because of how strong a teacher Ms. Kathy is. At the beginning of the year, the student had lots of tears, but Ms. Kathy encouraged him, made him feel safe, taught him strategies for feeling nervous. And now the student is excited and ready, both socially and economically, for kindergarten. So we are proud of receiving that information about Kathy Gordon, pre-K teacher at STEM. So job well done, and we appreciate your hard work for our pre-K learners. We'd also like to commend, and I received this, about Director of Elementary Rachel Jens. I'm sure you know this, but Rachel's a superstar. She's been studying Spanish, and she came into Richfield Schools not knowing Spanish at all. Takes every opportunity to practice speaking with staff and students in Spanish. It shows that Spanish is important, but also provides equitable support, particularly in our Spanish immersion program. Rachel just observed this particular person for an observation, and her language proficiency made it possible to meet in Spanish with a Spanish-speaking team, which for them allowed all of the teachers to participate and engage in the learning. And so the person that shared this is just thankful to Rachel and the dedication that she has in learning Spanish, since this is the highest language within our school district. And so we congratulate Rachel and are proud of hearing that about her. Then finally, RPS would like to commend RDLS Principal Marta Shasivand, who is retiring at the end of the school year. I received a communication from David Linda Hintermeister, parents of two RPS grads. And so there is a story from each of their daughters who went to RDLS. They have gone on to being very successful, and they share that reflecting on the significant impact RDLS has had on their lives and ours, we have observed not only academic but personal growth since they entered the Richfield School District. Our family cherishes the language and the Spanish-speaking community deeply, knowing it will remain an integral part of our lives forever. So congratulations to Senora Shasivand, and thank you for your commitment to the many students like Hannah and Madeline, who you have supported through your education at RDLS. We congratulate Senora Marta Shasivand, principal at RDLS.
Thank you. I always love a good commendation with photos. Can believe me, Senora Marta is not going to be with us very soon. Well, thank you, Superintendent Janowski. And we now move on to our consent agenda. Time for where we review routine matters, we pass them in bulk. Any item can be taken now upon board members' requests. And I welcome motions to either move the consent agenda or to act differently per board members.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Lees. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and our consent agenda is approved, and takes us to all business, starting with draft policy 117 for environmental sustainability and administrative guideline draft.
All right, so we are recommending a passage of the third read of policy 117, environmental sustainability, and new administrative guideline 117-1. Policy was draft, brought to the board back in October. We completed a second read on April 1st. And this is a brand-new policy, reviewed by AIPAC twice, the Richfield Green Team, Management Team, the Safe House to Schools Coordinator, and the Safe and Supportive Schools Committee. So this really acknowledges that our role is to take care of the land. It also reiterates some of the components of our land acknowledgement and really talks about environmental justice and equity. And then, in the guideline, it goes and talks about the methods by which we have organics, recycling, and waste disposal, our purchasing or goals to purchase recycled material, how we want to use our facilities in a way that's environmentally sustainable, and then also providing alternative transportation, environmental education, and continued advocacy and partnership to be good stewards of the land. There have not been significant changes since the last time we looked at this because of all the significant input. And so we do have this for you for recommended passage tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this policy? Looking around.
I'll say, it looks a lot different than the policy we presented to the students. Couple of definitions are gone, but I think we covered the bases. Looks like we covered the bases.
You have any comments about the differences between the versions?
We have just continued to reuse and refine. I believe the version he's talking about, I believe that one was from before April 1st, or was that?
It was the one we were using with the students.
Yes, got it, yes. So we continued to gather input, continued to refine, and moved a bunch of the things, I believe, from the policy into the guideline.
Thank you.
So we're there, I'm not seeing very much stricken from this version.
The purpose does not give the UN definition of sustainability in it anymore.
It actually does, page 52 of the packet. Policy describes vision for environmental sustainability issues. Sustainability defined by the UN as meeting the needs of the person.
Yeah, good.
Is that a motion, Karen?
It is a motion. I will move that we pass policy number 117, environmental sustainability as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Director Spencer and a second by Director Lees. About to ask you if you were satisfied with the, and so your second makes it.
I was looking at the wrong thing, but I, yes.
Saw a lot of pages.
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and environmental sustainability draft policy 117 and guideline is approved.
Got it, all right. So we are moving on to third read of policy 543, search of student lockers, desks, personal possessions, et cetera, and then also guideline 543.1. As you recall, at our last meeting, our students were very clear that the search policy and procedures weren't necessarily being followed in the intention with which they were written. And so we went back and gathered some additional information. We did learn that we need to continue doing some additional training, but also really need to be very clear. And you'll notice some of the changes that are in here are really based in the guidelines based on that student feedback. And so I am going to direct you down to page 65 in the packet, where we have added very clearly, searches of student possessions shall be conducted in a respectful and transparent manner that safeguards a student's dignity. Administrators will take care to ensure that students' possessions are not damaged during the search process, and will return the possessions that are not contraband to the previous locations after the search, to the extent practicable. We did learn that that had not always occurred, and that is definitely not the way we would want searches to happen, and so we want to be very clear in our wording, very clear in our training. Adding a summary of this policy will be printed in the student handbook, disseminated across our community, and a complete copy will be available to make sure that everybody has it, everybody has access to it, and that we are making sure that everybody is up to speed. And just continuing to integrate that student voice again, to make sure that the student experience not only follows the wording of the policy, but we are adding the intention of the policy and the intention of the implementation to make sure that our staff members are not confused or not misinterpreting the intention of this board. So with that, I have it before you today.
Thank you. Gerardo, you had, you offer really great feedback about this one. If my memory doesn't fail me, have you had a chance to review this one? Are you feeling that your concerns were included? That's great to hear. Any other feedback from board members, particularly our students? All right, looks like there's no questions. This one is presented to us for action. Is anyone ready to move this for action today?
I'll move the policy as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and policy 543 is approved, Superintendent Janowski?
Yes, and then just as a reminder to the board, and a reminder, because Ms. Quam sends this out, but I want to share this. So when policies are passed, those become part of the training in the fall for all staff, but when there is a substantial change or clarification, we make sure that that clarification gets out to staff immediately after the board meeting. And then specific staff, like administration at our high school and second and middle school, will be reviewing this policy within the week, and to make sure that they are up to speed with all of the updates.
Great to hear, thank you.
Yes, and then transitioning to international students, policy 503. And just as a reminder to the board, this is not international students who now reside in Richfield or residing in the state of Minnesota and are open enrolled. These are exchange students who are living in another country, coming as part of a cultural exchange program. This outlines the methodology by which the, and typically it is high school, but not necessarily, by which students who are international students would enroll as part of an exchange program, and they go through a process related to our high school that does support examination and oversight of that. Talks about the same academic requirements, same rules, same administration, same methodology, same opportunity for co-curricular and extracurricular activities. And if we do add international students, they then have the rights of our traditional students. So with that, we did, at the request of the board at the last meeting, contact our attorney, who is making, who did make sure in connection with immigration that they were, that this policy was up to speed in appropriate language for international students. So with that, we are having this for recommended passage.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
I just ask again, how many times have we put this into action? Anyone's memory?
We have not in a very, very long time. I think the reality is, we have a very international school to start with. And so it is a challenging question to take a student for which there would be no funding and no funding support, when we have a very broadly diverse and international group of students as it sits. And so we are not ruling it out, but it is available as an option. Should be finding ourselves in that spot. Pondering a motion, Mr. Polis?
Yeah, I mean, I read through the changes before. There are a lot of changes, but just to clarify some things, I think, I believe we more or less are saying, I mean, with different words, because some things have changed, that we will, that we will treat such students, again, ones we've never actually met, the same way we theoretically would have treated them in the past.
Yes, there, yes. The only changes that are actually in here are based on immigration rules that are implemented by the federal government that were acquired by law to put in here.
Then I will move policy 503 as presented.
I will second it.
We have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and policy 503 about international students is approved, and we have one more and all business.
All right, and this one is only a second read. Online learning options, policy 607, governing those that are partnering with our partners for online, which are both 287, Minnesota Virtual, and partners for which we integrate and support from an online perspective. So just clarifying, and this has a significant amount of updates, because there has since COVID and the online integration in schools, been a lot of additional definitions and additional clarifications. We'll continue to provide support for those taking supplemental services and supporting them, including supporting IEPs and meals for eligible students. Defines blended instruction, online course syllabus, online instruction, online instructional sites. And so we're recommending the board take some time to read all the changes. It also defines supplemental online course providers. Again, these are all things that were not there pre-COVID because of all the things that were in place. We also will be, or have, an online learning liaison to support any students who are interested in participating. And then there is an entire section, starting in page 85, that is newer, from digital instruction and what that is and how we would provide that. There is a full set of definitions around supplemental online courses. And so again, pages and pages for you all to review, and gathering input and feedback prior to the next meeting, where we will be taking a third read. But lots of things for review.
Thank you. Any initial thoughts about this one?
Just a clarification question that I have. This is really intended for students that are like long-term online. This isn't like a student's in the hospital for a week and can't attend. Is that correct, or does this cover those students as well?
That is correct. That is correct. It's also for, or students who, if they wanted to take one additional course online, what that would look like, or if they wanted a blended methodology, what that would look like. So yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing other potential questions about this one, can move into new business.
All right, we're going to bring up Holdgie to talk about his favorite subject, money.
Mine too. I like the subject, but I do have other more favorite subjects. But for this presentation, absolutely. I have, for your review tonight, the preliminary budget and a request to, based on that budget, authorize the finance department to expend up to 30% of all fund budgets prior to the final budget approval and adoption. We do anticipate that final budget coming to you in, at the second meeting in June, as it typically does, and has to be approved prior to July 1. This is still a work in process. We have identified projected revenue, have rolled up our staffing and other expenditures and made adjustments to that. We are currently going through a line-by-line item of all of our current staffing to make sure any of the program changes and additions and reductions have occurred as part of that process, so. But for your review tonight, right, at this point, we are expecting revenues in the general fund of about $83.5 million, which is about a $1.6 million increase in our revenue. our revenues. You'll note on here that it incorporates the reduction in federal funds, specifically tied in with COVID, as well as other programs in that area, and then that increase in property taxes associated with the voter-approved referendum last fall. Expenditures are projected to increase by about $2.8 million, coming in at about $84.6 million next year in that general fund. And then overall expenditures in all funds, including our construction funds and all of our other funds like food service, community education, revenue is projected to come in at $108,940,000, which is about a $433,000 decrease. And the expenditures are projected to come in at about $112 million, which is about a $3.4 million increase. Again, much of that reduction in revenue is tied in with the bond issue with our construction fund for the current year, where those bonds are issued, that revenue comes in and then sits and then is spent out in those construction areas, which is why you'll see that larger expenditure increase in that area. When we look at fund balance with those projections, the unassigned fund balance is projected to come in at about 11.17%, which is a $788,000 decrease. The restricted fund balances, which are listed on that page there, are projected to reduce by about $350,000. And then overall impact on the general fund is about a $1.2 million reduction currently, coming in at about 19% overall general fund balance. Again, this is very preliminary. We have already made some adjustments today, looking at some of the specific staffing lines associated with that, too. So that final budget will be presented in June. We also anticipate bringing that more finalized budget to the fiscal planning advisory committee in June as well. So with that, if you have any questions at this point, I will respond to those. Otherwise, we're requesting board action on authorizing us to initiate expenditures up to 30% of that preliminary budget. That allows us to start creating purchase orders and making purchases that would be received over the summer that require some additional advanced ordering to make sure that we receive them in time for the school year.
Before we go into questions, this one was noted for action on the packet. Do we need to do anything to say that it was for review?
So we're asking the-
You said three times aye for your review, or if you have questions, right, so I'm-
Yep. So I will clarify. So the budget is for review. You're not finalizing and approving that budget, but we are requesting your authorization to start expending funds from the projected budget for next year that allows us to make those purchases prior to the board actually approves that final budget.
Thank you. That makes sense.
Things like technology and others have lots of legroom for-
I was just a little-
That's good. Very fair. Thank you.
The cap on what the team could expend between now and the final budget is 30% of this number.
Correct.
And we will have a real budget to approve by the end of June.
Correct.
And it could be slightly different from this.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question about this as well. So just trying to get a feeling for what that 30% is. You mentioned if there's technology needs that are technically for use next school year, but you need to purchase them in June.
So there is a, there are a lot of requisitions that start to be created right now. So Chromebook purchases, a lot of those technology pieces, so that they have time to prepare those over the summer for when students are arriving.
So if we buy a Chromebook in May, but it's really not put into use until August, it's next year's budget?
So they create requisitions requesting that they be delivered after July 1.
Okay.
We have subscriptions, software subscriptions and things like that, that we initiate so that we can kind of maintain that subscription service. There is facility work and everything like that. But we are restricted to when we receive those orders, and those orders have to be then expended for in that fiscal year that they're received. So the requisitions like this, because we know that it takes a few months to get them, the requisitions are going in, being requested to be delivered after July 1, so that that is a part of the process.
Okay. And then just a couple of questions. So on the revenue side, the local fees and interest were pretty significantly lower. Can you speak to that? I've seen a decrease of $614,000. So what is that?
I will have to take a look and see where that specifically was accounted for. I don't have that detail right now.
Yeah, I meant to call you earlier today, but it got away from me. So that's fine. Get back to me later. The other item that I was wondering, on the expenditure side, employee benefits are pretty significantly, as a percentage-wise, higher?
That flagged for me too last week. And so that's one of the pieces, when we're going line by line through each one of those. The process that we use is we load all of our current staff, add in positions that we anticipate being added in, eliminating those positions that are being eliminated, making some assumptions while knowing where their salaries and benefits currently are. So when we were working on this and updating that on Friday, that was something that I flagged, that we'll do a deep dive on that benefit side to make sure that that's corrected. We do kind of a dual check. So I do some preliminary budgeting in a different model than what is used for the budget upload. And so the salaries and benefits total ended up being pretty close to what my assumptions were with bucket math, as I call it. Just the division of what salaries and what's benefits played out differently. So I think the number is relatively close for what they were looking at. It's just a matter of making sure that they were coded to the right parts of the budget.
Okay. All right. And then just one other question on the budget overview page, about halfway down the assigned COVID funds. Are those not ESAR funds that go away at $852,000 that are in the balance today?
So in the assigned funds, so those are funds that have been received.
Yep.
And we've put those dollars into an assigned account, an assigned reserve account, so that we can expend from that after the COVID federal funds coming into the district were received. So there are, some of the funds that we received and were able to use grant money for was kind of supplanting class sections and things like that. And so we dedicated some of those funds as we received them into an assigned account.
You dedicated some of those grant funds?
So we received the grant funds. We had appropriate expenditures for it, but put some of the money away for the rainy day when the COVID funds rolled out, so that we wouldn't have that fiscal cliff that other districts are facing. So as we look at deficit spending, that is one of the areas that we likely will make some adjustments to, so that we actually receive or spend some of those assigned funds if needed.
Okay. And there's enough categories within that assigned COVID, within that line item for us to be able to spend those? Like, I'm wondering how broad the types of things that might go under that assigned?
Assigned funds are funds that are identified by the district administration
Okay.
to be kind of buckets for specific purposes.
Yep.
So we've identified that there is, we had appropriate expenditures that allowed us to receive the federal funds. Now that we've received those funds, because the expenditures already lined up with what the grant application was, there is not the same restriction that connected in with those COVID funds as there is when we actually are receiving the funds from the federal government.
Okay.
So the purposes that the grant had, we identified and used those funds for that. We just put it into a bucket so that it rolled out instead of, knowing that we would need some of those funds as we move forward.
Okay. So that, we're not anticipating of spending that next year, but for some purpose, probably the following year? Or is there something that we would need to do as a board to authorize those to move to an unassigned?
No. So there's nothing that, there's nothing that the board-
Restricted requires us to-
Actually, restricted, restricted is required by the state. So it's funds that are required to be set aside by the state. So we can only use the revenue for long-term facilities maintenance, for long-term facilities maintenance expenditures. So there is, we have, assigned is an administrative fund balance. There is also a committed fund balance that's available to the board, where the board actually takes action on how those funds are set aside. We've been pretty transparent on how those funds are, you know, set up in that assigned account every time we're reporting the budget. We're showing that information, that detail. That sustainability is exactly why we put those funds into COVID, knowing that we received additional revenue. It was building that sustainability. We, I will say, again, this is a very preliminary budget. We're making adjustments. And so one of the things we will look at as we get closer, and probably most likely in the revised budget even next year, is take a look at, do we allocate some of those COVID funds for the reduction in our overall fund balance or the over expenditure in the overall fund balance? So it comes out of that targeted fund instead of coming out of the general fund.
And that would just be, that would be administrator making that change?
We are generally making those recommendations and changes as we go through the budgeting process, correct?
With input and feedback, right? So if you think about it just simply, we were directed by the board to, when we got the funds for COVID and also referenda, for example, try to make those funds sustainable, so we don't have large, large cuts. And so if you think about all the social, emotional staff and supports that we have added, districts that are hitting the fiscal cliff are now releasing all of those staffs because they don't have the funds. And so what we tried to do is make sure that we don't have such an abrupt change in our services, planning according to the sustainability vision of the board. So.
Thank you.
I'll move that we authorize the finance department to expend up to 30% of all fund budgets prior to the final budget approval and adoption.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and our preliminary budget and advanced expenditure authorization for the next school year is approved.
Thank you.
And we continue now on to the joint powers agreement for the Metro South Adult Basic Education Consortium.
All right. So we've been longtime partners of Metro South. They are serving residents of Richfield, 17 and older, who are not currently in public school day classes. It's one of my favorite in the run of graduations, where we'll have ARSEP on June 5, Adult Basic Education on June 6, and then our traditional high school on June 7. So we will continue to be part of this consortium, serving students frequently who come back to school, many of whom are adults and in this ongoing partnership. And this is how we do it, through Metro South ABE. And so yearly, this comes to us, just as a reiteration to maintain part of this group.
Any questions, comments, motions?
Excuse me. I'll move that we renew the, what is it, joint powers agreement for Metro South ABE Consortium.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, I have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and the joint powers agreement for the Metro South Adult Basic Education Consortium is approved. And similarly, we will now review joint powers agreement for the learning exchange.
Yes. And so this is going to look very similar. However, this one is slightly different. We used to have a group, the same group of four, but Edina and Eden Prairie have left the consortium. And so it would be us partnering with Bloomington. We have been partnering in most of our services with Bloomington, have been occurring over the years anyways. And so this isn't a change in service. But with the others leaving, we are required to reiterate that we remain in partnership with Bloomington. Allows us to access the funds, to access the supports, and continue serving the adults in our community with disabilities.
Do we anticipate any significant changes in the services we offer with the loss of Edina and Eden Prairie as partners?
We do not. We do not expect anything significant.
If there was a service that someone was making use of that, that's previously had been hosted, say, by one, by one of those districts, is, is there a way for our community members to still access it?
I'm looking at Dr. Clarkson. So if somebody had been receiving services-
He's very studiously looking at something else.
Yes. So for our adults with disabilities, receiving services with our former partners in Edina and Eden Prairie, are we still able to access those services, but not in partnership? Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other questions?
Just a kind of a, there's a, there's a comment in this one, actually, the last one as well, that says, if a partner wants to withdraw, and I'm not suggesting that we do withdraw, but that you provide 11 months' written notice, which to me sounds like if we are approving this one, we're actually signing up for the following year more so than this year, because this would have been-
Yes. I mean, we could theoretically give 11 months' notice. We wouldn't do that. And if we were looking at that as a likelihood, we would probably mention it at this time. So we would approve this and then by, what, August, be saying the same thing for the year after.
I'm curious, did the partners that withdrew, did they give reasons to us as to what, why they wanted to withdraw?
I think there has been some health grant money that people feel like they can use in different ways within their own community, and there just hasn't been as much cross-service as one might have thought. And so it's just able to do it on their own.
Okay.
I'll move that we accept the 2024 joint powers agreement for the Learning Exchange Consortium to cooperate with Bloomington for programs and services for adults with disabilities.
I will second, just to say that I'm for it as well, after those questions that we're a little bit probing.
I have a motion by Mr. Polis and a second by Mr. Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and this joint powers agreement for the learning exchange has been approved. And we now have a resolution for membership in the MSHSL.
All right. So Minnesota State High School League, on a yearly basis, we just have to reiterate participation. Obviously, whether we like the Minnesota State High School League and think they're super effective, which there is, they are, or we are not super enthralled, because there are areas, including intervening and some challenging things, that they have not historically been great in, we really have no options if our students are going to participate in sponsored events, other than to not have our students have opportunities. So we are here before you tonight with the, the resolution to remain members of Minnesota State High School League.
Thank you.
Yes, this is, this is an annual agreement without alternative. That isn't dire and would negatively affect all of our, all of our, the folks who participate in activities supported by the high school league currently. I will ask you, we have a local advisory committee listed, and this, this part of it is actually new to my eyes. I know, I've been the designated board member, but we have, we have a local advisory committee with myself, a student, a parent, and two staff members, you know, the, the activities director and the faculty member. I'm not aware of that advisory committee ever having met or having discussions. And if they are, I'm not getting invited. So, which could be planned. I get that a lot.
I will say, in reading it, I was like, why are we not using the athletics committee as the advisory? But, you know, apparently it's a meeting that you're attending, but not.
Right. So yeah, anyway, I do, I'm okay with it as a premise. I just want to follow up and say, if, if our local advisory committee, as represented to the State High School League, is this group, I'd like to know more about what we're doing and what my responsibility to fulfill that role is.
Great question. Great question. I think that we can, we can certainly examine how we're doing it. We can certainly examine the connection of the activities advisory and see if there are better ways. Mr. Carter, would you like us to push to have the activities advisory be the advisory group?
It doesn't have to be. It's more of a, it seems like an opportunity where you've got a parent and a board member already on it.
Yep.
Versus making another committee that some other board member doesn't know about attending or not attending.
Which is quite all right. We just, again, we just have to make sure we fulfill the, informing the State High School League if there's a change in who our rep is. If it's you instead of me, then great.
Does it mean additional work? Because you've got this.
It does not mean additional work. But we can address that later. I mean, it happens all the time that mid-year, you know-
People change, yeah.
People, people leave, and so a new person is appointed every January, right? So this, this isn't a sentence for me. It's, we can, you know, this is for, it's because we, we assign our roles and our liaison assignments in January, and we're saying this is for the upcoming- the upcoming school year, which starts, you know, July 1, right? So, the system is accustomed to having names changed.
What's weird is, is, do you remember this last year, I mean, adult?
Yeah, this is pretty close.
I don't remember seeing this specific part, the local advisory committee members listed out.
Right, I thought, yeah, I was gonna say, I thought we approved it, but I don't remember seeing names assigned to it, because we would have asked the same question a year ago.
Probably.
So we can certainly look back, I know that when we log it in with the High School League, this is the list that they have in there.
So, you would be checking?
I will follow up and check, well, we will log it in as this group, and then we will examine, just to be done with the requirement, and then we will move ourselves forward with determining for the future what to do.
Sounds great. I move that we accept the 2024-25 Resolution for Membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Director Carter, and a second by Director Polis. This is a resolution, so I'm going to stand on my left. Director Spencer.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Lees.
Aye.
Director Polis.
Aye.
And Chevotai, and the resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League is approved, and we will now be reviewing school board meeting dates for the following school year, '24, '25.
All right, and so, this could be easy, or there are a couple of complex questions for us to double-check, because things have been mentioned that I just wanted to bring before the board. Right now, all meetings are held 7:00 PM in the district office, first and third month, the month, with exceptions. We should confirm that we still want a 7 o'clock start time, not 6:00 or 6:30, so that is just there. It was brought up as a question, to see if anybody would be interested in that, and then, we have had times where a quorum has not necessarily made it, and so one of the things that some other boards have done, and again, neither of these things have to be changed, is, these are just things for the board to at least review. In the event that a school board meeting is canceled due to unforeseen circumstances, it would be rescheduled for the next day or 24 hours, unless a quorum of the board is not available. So if, for example, emergencies came up on a Monday, and there was no quorum available, we could then be technically already rescheduled for the day after, and that is what has been done, at least with open meeting law, to allow that. Neither of those are required to do, and then it's the other comments that we have, and so I'm not going to go through those or all of the dates, because this follows the very similar pattern, but just double-checking. If we are ready to go ahead with a 7 o'clock time, and not the quorum saver, we'll say, we can move forward, or we can have conversation, and then also bring it back at our next meeting, depending on what people think.
I do have a conversation starter, perhaps, because I know this is something that has affected us in the past, but I'm curious, maybe some historical context around only having public comment the second meeting of the month versus an opportunity for each meeting, because usually it's, most of the time, no one's here, but one or two people speak up. I'm curious if...
The history of it was that we would, we had used the first meeting of the month for the events where we would have schools present sometimes, and in the event that the public comments were exciting, we didn't want, for example, an elementary school with their children presenting to us, to be surrounded by something that might be too exciting.
Got it.
Too exciting for adults, then that would not be a warm, welcoming environment for the kids who are presenting to us.
Okay.
So that was the premise, you know, we don't always have an elementary school presenting to us, for example, but that, that was the background for why it's not every meeting.
But I think it's also important to remember, and I think, Mr. Polis, you say this frequently, that public comment is the only time to address you on a microphone, but you all are readily available, you are very active and present in the community, and people can talk to board members on a very regular basis, outside of this specific time.
Correct, it's just a question of, you know, right, and the, the availability is constrained when all the excitement happens in a very short timeframe, and people come to us in bulk, and you're like, I, you physically can't respond to them all.
Right.
And that, they find that frustrating, but that's, there's not a lot of workaround for that, other than perhaps we could do, you know, we can always aspire to do better and have, you know, we, I don't know how we, how we would sign out, you take the first three, I get the next three, without it, so that people feel heard more readily, but that's, that's the background of it. I mean, it came up years ago, public comment used to be...
Not at all?
Perhaps not at all, and only, right, only through, right, and it's not required, and then we're like, well, that seems strange.
They haven't used?
And then, and then we added it, and we've been tweaking it to try to make it more user-friendly for the folks, you know, for the visitors, not...
Yep.
So, with mixed success.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I know that my wife spoke last year, the year before, and I think she was out of town in the meeting in April. She, she wanted to speak in March, couldn't. The meeting in April, she was out of town, and so that, now we're two months after when the issue came up, so.
And, and my advice to that, to someone in a situation like that, is to please feel free to reach out to us, like, you know, I'm happy to have conversations outside of this, when we actually don't have conversation.
Right, when we have a conversation, yeah.
We just hear it, you know, the meeting is the only time we can collectively hear it, right, as a group, like, we can't all meet at Caribou, and with four or more of us, and have people talk to us, and so that's news to some people, but this is their opportunity to speak and be heard by the group all at once, so there's a convenience for them, the lack of conveniences, we don't talk back.
Right.
I'll also say that we don't really have, by the time someone comes to the public me, I mean, it's always better to reach out in advance, because then we have time to ask questions, go back to the school administration.
Yes.
When things are brought up here, sometimes I feel like, in, generically speaking, the public comment is, is a really good way to make a public statement about something, and in cases where the board is not available, that might be the only way that people could do that, but that's not the case here, because we are available by email, phone, we are...
For the most part, yeah.
So, I would also just jump in and say that one of the things we've also allowed in the past, I don't know if it's something we would allow in the future, is someone providing their statement to be read, so, at least, I can see during my tenure, we've done at least once, or someone, so, your wife could have got ahead and submitted it, right, and then it could have been read by your chair. Or someone else, I'm sure.
One thing I can do is to be more, to communicate more during the regular meetings about all of those other choices, because I think you, you did a really great job as chair, to share those specifics out, and, and so, those are good reminders about how it doesn't have to be, it could even be virtual, really, right, like in...
We, 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 yes.
I mean, we'll have to be here, but like, they can be...
We allow people to submit recorded, recorded messages, right, virtual's difficult, but can be done.
Yeah.
And, or written, and we read it, or, you know, I mean, or the alternative is we, you know, written, and you just send it, and we commit to reading it and responding to the person. But, anyway, going back to your original, Mr. Spencer, it was, it was, we chose it so that we could preserve the first meeting of the month, in the event we have school-age groups coming in to speak to us, so that we don't get a, a topic that's exciting to the community, where they're lined up to speak, perhaps heatedly.
Right.
You know, with, with very strong and disappointing tones around the kids, not that they're, you know, but our point is to keep them comfortable.
Especially when we came up with this, right after, very exciting meetings, so that was really top of mind.
Yes.
I think one of the things that I'm also looking for in particular, I know tonight there was a student that was going to speak and did not, and I know sitting in that chair can be intimidating, and so I think your point, Director Pol, about the submitting a video in advance or something like that, if we bring that up, I would love to hear from more students in particular in this forum, because I think, number one, I want to hear student voice, but also, number two, it's such an important, I think, opportunity for them to get some public speaking, too.
Yeah. Right. I will say that, going back to this list, slightly unrelated, I don't want us to go earlier than 7:00, because sometimes we have, when we have the study sessions, where are we putting those? You know, they have to be at, usually they're the hour fronting our meeting, and so we will run into availability for those, too, right? Someone will, you know, if we started our meeting at 6:00, and we had a study session at 5:00, there'd be folks on the, on the board who couldn't make it for day job requirements or other things, so.
Since we have those a couple times a year, I'm wondering if, for the benefit of the earlier start, if we would consider having the study session after?
We could not do that.
No?
Because it could be 9:30, and, you know, if we go 6:00, and we happen to have a long agenda, do we race through the agenda so that we can have guests at a certain hour?
Hmm.
Right, because usually it's, it's because we have external people visiting us.
I was thinking, because of, I remember before the pandemic, we used to have the students, when we had the, you know, hosted board meeting by specifics, and that felt late for, and I wondered if that has been why we don't see as many students anymore.
I think it changed in COVID, and people started doing videos, and I can certainly encourage our administrators, as a gentle reminder in August, that student groups are always fun, and see if we can get them to do that.
So, is there interest, or are we saying that starting earlier is off-table? I mean, I just, I'm thinking about your comment, Tim, and I'm like, the only way I could see it working is, you could maybe start at 6:30, and then, to your point, the study session would be at 5:30, but you're right, you couldn't, I couldn't do any earlier than that, I'd like...
No, that's a good point about this, this study session, yeah.
Well, if nobody at the table is speaking up for earlier than 7:00, then 7:00 sounds great. Yeah.
I also worry that if we started at 6:30, that all we do is still go a half an hour late.
Yeah.
We find other things to talk about.
I, I am willing to consider the, the standing practice and the stated practice, that if we have unforeseen circumstances, that, that leave us to cancel a meeting, that we, the automatic next day is, is the goal, but I wouldn't want to continue that in perpetuity, because someone could be quite ill, someone could be traveling and distant, and, and the issue could, you know, we're not going to have this daisy chain of, of rolling forward a day.
Right, so if we did that, we would just have it posted as such, and then we would have to confirm with enough board members to make sure four could make the next day, when we couldn't get four the day before, or it's no cancellation.
Aren't there open meeting rules that you have to, like, if, if there were an example where I was traveling, but I could, could have made that quorum, and I wasn't going to attend Monday, I can't attend Tuesday either, because then I have to, no, we have to post three days in advance the address I'm at?
That's right.
So, would it, and it sounds like this so rarely happens, that maybe it doesn't matter, but would it make sense to say if we can't get a quorum on Monday, that we move it to Thursday, so that we do have that three-day buffer?
You can always do that, because you can schedule a special meeting three days in advance, so that's not really changing anything.
Didn't you attend online once?
I just watched the YouTube, I was going to attend virtually, and...
We are allowed if someone is ill.
Yeah.
If you are ill, we can say that, and then the requirements are that they have to be visible to us, and we're visible to them.
Rachel did that once, too.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, and we don't necessarily need to do this either, it's just an option. I know that we've struggled a few times between weather, or obligations, or illness, or things like that. This is just a fail-safe, because, for example, on the 24th of June, which is our two meetings from now, we need to have a quorum. I know that at least one of our board members is out on that day.
I just canceled the allocation by this, like, we figured it out.
Oh, you're there.
It was a misunderstanding.
It was a misunderstanding, even better, so, because we have to approve the budget.
Right, correct.
Just out of curiosity, is this the verbiage that would, that other districts have used?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
The reason why I ask is that, I mean, to Tim's point of, like, the rolling, right, 24, it's like, well, it seems, I don't know, I think I'd be interested to do it, if we, if we didn't make quorum and we needed it, it feels nice to not have to monkey around with the three-day notice, but then it's like, I don't know if it was like an optional, right, it's like, if needed, we could do 24 hours, if quorum was available, and we needed it, I don't know, that's...
Right, because if we knew on Monday that the Tuesday was also just as impossible...
Then it wouldn't matter.
Then we might as well just do our informational thing, and clear out the non-action items for the three, or two, or one who are here, and, and then pick it up in two weeks. That's, yeah.
All right, so in the interest of time this evening, do we want to think about that?
Let's think about that.
All right, Tim, we'll bring it back at our next meeting.
But do we need, but we can approve the dates without that, that other discussion? Is that...
We can, but if we have to bring it back, it doesn't really matter, because we just need it before July, so we'll, we'll bring it back at the next meeting, and I'll check in the board members in between.
Hopefully, there'll be quorum at those, right?
We would...
I might also, just, just a thought on the, go back to the 24-hour thing, we could say the following Monday, so it's a, we're all, we pretty much reserve our Monday evenings, in a lot of cases anyhow, maybe that's the opportunity, is that we just, we delay it by a week, and meet the following week.
Can you wait that long?
Um, yeah, I mean, we have not found ourselves in a spot where it has been a problem. What it tends to do is create the marathon session two weeks later, because we double the agenda then, but...
The, the real need for it is somewhat rare, there are some things that are so time-sensitive, we have to address them within a certain timeframe, like the budget by the end of, you know, June.
Right.
Or other staff actions that have to be done before the end, by a certain deadline.
But then in that, the three-day is, you know, meeting would save that case, right?
Right, so for example, on June 24th, we are needing to have a quorum, so we can pass the budget, if there was something that came up, we would pop up a meeting three days later on June 27th, and we would need to get four people that day, otherwise, we would have some very significant problems financially.
So, I've got a random question, I'm just gonna, so as we continue to talk about this, I'm gonna stir the whole pot, I believe there's some discussion at the state level about the number of board members.
Uh, yes, but that's in our next legislative update, so, let's do this.
I do have one more comment about the dates that are offered. It is interesting that our, so, when we offer dates, are we saying these are for the school year, and the school year starts July 1, yet our first meeting, we run this one meeting and delayed, and the first dates on the list are for August, and they, we run until the following July, which is into the, so, are we, are we allowed to do that?
We're allowed to do, basically with dates, you could do multiple years at the same time, so we already approved the July of this year, this is just a practice, not a state statutory thing.
In year 11, I'm looking at this, and I'm sure we've done this the whole time.
Yes, I'm sure we have done this 11 straight years.
All right, thank you.
So, we will bring this back, and I will answer all of those questions in between, so that...
I'm excited for this.
So that we are good.
All right.
All right, awkwardly transition us to donations, just 'cause. We have a lot, each of the four RPS elementary schools received a donation of a book valued at $1,350, for a donation total of $54, from the Minnesota chapter of Ashray. Thank you, Ashray. Sheridan Hills Elementary received donations of $920 to the American Online Giving Foundation, and $100 through the Blackbough Giving Fund, thank you both. RHS Science Department received a donation of $120 from Elizabeth Shible of Minneapolis, an anonymous donation of $50 for the BWCA trip. The RHS French Club received donations of $10 from Tamara Larson of Richfield, $25 from Mari Lopez of Richfield, $15 from Kathy Straka of Richfield, $20 from Ellen Tronnis of Richfield, $10 from Allison Beckman of Richfield, $25 from Sarah Gasek of Richfield, $100 from Audrey Jurcic of Richfield, $25 from Liz Lino of Minneapolis, $25 from Amy Flicker of Minneapolis, and anonymous donations totaling $155, thank you for your generosity. Richfield High School received a donation of $840 on behalf of the class of 2008, thank you, Class 2008. RPS Sunshine Lunch Account received a donation of $25 from Kristen and Justin Shaq of Richfield, thank you. Richfield Public Schools received a donation of $100 from Sue Kinnaberg of Richfield, thank you, thank you, and Richfield Dual Language School received a donation of $1,996.23 from the RDLS PTSO, thank you all for your generosity.
Wonderful.
I'll move that we accept the donations with gratitude.
Second.
I have a motion by Director Polis, and a second by Director Carter. I have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? She votes aye, and we accept these donations with gratitude to all of our donors investing in our kids. We are now into advanced planning and legislative updates.
All right, so I'm gonna step right ahead of Mr. Carter, who asked, so there was a petition, there was a bill to allow a community to petition to move from six board members to seven board members. There were bills about the REED Act, there were bills around funding, there were bills around just about everything. The legislature came to a close just recently. So what I'm gonna suggest is that we don't go into each of those bills today or talk in depth about much of it, but that you allow administration to prepare a summary and bring that as a legislative update at our next board meeting. Because the answer is, I don't actually know if they passed it or didn't because there was such a crazy frenzy with the one legislator getting arrested and things really broke down. And so tracking exactly what passed and didn't has been like a moving target.
And there was a lot of combining of committees. Like, education finance didn't even do their own omnibus this year. It was just.
And less than 24 hours ago.
Yes. Yeah, the deadline really is what the only thing that made them do this.
It just sounded optional.
Yes, well, to give you follow-up, the bill actually said that you would have to allow it, but there would need to be a petition and it could be in the next election. And so we're talking about something that would probably be a year, year and a half out for a board like ours.
It just looked unclear, like it was saying that it could, like, the board itself could make the decision. And I was like, oh, that's interesting.
The current law gives the board the power to present to the voters if we want a seventh member. I believe the adjustment was that the voters could petition the board and compel the board without the board voting on it. That, you're getting, you're getting a seventh member.
And the only reason.
I believe that was the change. I don't know how it came up.
Well, as I said, my only comment or thought on it was, as we talked about scheduled dates and like this auto date, is do we consider, does number seven make sense, right? From a forum perspective, right? That was the only reason why I brought it up.
Right, and so I would just ask the board to pause on that one. I believe it came up because of Inoka, and Inoka had a published article about three board members who were saying they weren't going to pass the budget, three board members who wanted to. And it actually passed with over two months before the deadline. And so even though this is a reaction response to it, the Inoka board, despite their differences, got this done, I don't know, two months faster with no special session, significantly more effectively than the legislature does a lot of their work. So it's just kind of unique that that moved forward.
Right, so for those of us who get the daily email from the MSBA, you know, the lap around the state and school boards, if there's a 3-3 vote somewhere, you're definitely going to see that article.
Yeah.
They're not common. The administration usually, in every district, not just ours, usually presents things that they think have a snowball's chance of, you know, being unanimous or maybe one dissenter. Some things that they're required to, for example, the threat in Inoka was, was that.
No budget.
That they'd have no budget. Or we've seen in some boards where the chair decision wasn't made in January because it was 3-3, multiple rounds of voting for 3-3. But again, rare, so that's the, as the superintendent said, why don't we pause on that and see? We'll see, we'll see what the law says if it's changed, and then we can have, if we want, substantive discussion another time.
Sounds fantastic. Thank you.
MSBA, you guys probably also saw it, had like a lunch and learn last week about the REED Act. I wasn't able to attend this one, but we should be getting an email this week to watch the recording of it, so looking forward to that.
And they did get the 35.
They did what?
They did the REED Act, the 35 million that was proposed, did get approved.
Yep.
Since you bring it up, and I know we talked about it almost every, very often.
Yeah.
But it's pages and pages and tables. I learned something today looking at those results. We said, he said the, all of the dollars were in thousands. And so then I'm like, oh, how do I turn this thing with five digits into, and I'm like, oh, I see. So I didn't know that that was the thing that was done, you know?
Yeah, they were throwing $50,000 at it, which was actually 50 million bucks, or whatever the number is, right? It really changes your scope of getting something done.
Yeah, I had to stop for a moment. I'm like, oh, wait, how much is that?
Is that the one that's $40 per student, the 35 million?
There's, the 35 million, I believe, is just, they identified how that money was going to be allocated. That was approved in the last legislature session. I think there's additional funding that was approved this year for sort of the training.
Yep, there was.
One letter from the legislative trainee, so that had to be.
Yeah, that was extra.
With required negotiation agreement and a specific methodology of payment with specific dollar figures. And so again, they were still hammering that out at the last minute.
We'll get the details in two weeks.
Yes, yes, we shall.
Oh, any other legislative updates now?
No.
Okay, information and questions from board members?
I have two things. If, if board members have, are interested in the Spartan Foundation golf event, please let me know and I can get you the signup link. Or if you're interested in helping in some way, I could put you in touch with the folks who lead that. Also, the Spartan Foundation awards scholarships to seniors every year, and the event, I believe, is the Tuesday after.
29th, it's the Wednesday, and it's here in the auditorium.
Yeah.
I'm thinking Chimduu might be getting something based on that hedge.
So it will be, right, it's, we moved it away from the Tuesday after Memorial Day because the RHS staff said, you know, early morning, right after a long weekend is not how you get the best attendance from anyone, let alone students who've just had a long weekend and are near the end of their school year. So, so we moved it to Wednesday, even though it disrupts the optimist meeting that's usually held here. Now it's all coming together for me.
Yes, lots of drama running.
What time is that meeting?
What time?
Yeah.
Hmm.
7:30 is what I have on my calendar. It goes 7:30 to 8:30, and then the students go to class. Unless they're done with class.
And, and so I can, I can.
The foundation, like the meeting?
Yeah.
Um, you know, it's at 7:45.
7:45.
I'll get follow-ups to the superintendent so that he can inform the board.
See you at 7:45.
And the other bit, follow-up to our discussion of the state high school league, I looked up last year's.
Form?
Form, and it was just a one-pager where it just said, we want to join, and on the designated direct, there was no supplementary material, so this.
This is new.
It's that, I haven't seen that form in, at best, two years, if not ever, so.
I don't recall seeing it before, like, I had, I had no idea there was actually a group.
I know, it's a fun list of people. I want to meet them.
It looks a little more than what I have historically filled out as a follow-up to the meeting, but we'll see.
Yeah.
Any other information, chair, questions? Okay, suggested and future agenda items?
Just a reminder that I'm assuming, although they're certainly welcome to come back on June 24th, I'm assuming that our next meeting on June 3rd is the last of our students for the summer. Hoping they'll be here so we can celebrate them for their participation. If not, we'll celebrate them whether they're here or not, but I'm hoping they're here on the 3rd so we can thank them for all of their contributions.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that, future meeting dates, June 3rd, 7:00 PM for a regular board meeting. And the next one, June 24th, at 7:00 PM for a regular board meeting with public comments. And we are adjourning at 8:45. Thank you.